Good March, we've had opportunity for public comment four times, including tonight, when there were sixty public statements so far and over one hundred and twenty-five emails to all board members. We've lengthened the process for the boundary changes and we've delayed the vote. We've had many hours of discussion and study of the options presented with board members, administrators, et cetera. With all that said, we have limited time for public comment tonight, so I'm going to ask that anyone who has not had an opportunity to speak speaks first to address the board, and if there's time left, others can speak, and we will be adjourning at six fifteen. So moving on to oversight of operations, let's go to the budget.
Good evening. You've heard some of this before, and so the good news is we think we have a tentative agreement at the legislature, and so right now we know that we'll get a two percent increase and a two percent increase, or we think we know that, and that's what's being proposed. I'm not done yet. I'm still hoping that we will get some additional funding for special education, even to the point where we can just remain stable in our special education costs and revenue. So if not, that will have an effect on us as well, because our cross subsidy will continue to increase. As we go through this, you know that this is our strategic directions right now, and this is what guides our budget decisions and where the money goes in our district. And so as we go through this, we just talk a little bit about enrollment projections for next year. As you know, we have pupil units and we have adjusted daily average membership. So the numbers are the same until you get to seventh through twelfth grade, and then we take our numbers times one point two, because our high school students get, or grades seven through twelve, receive one point two percent of the funding. So you can see the totals we're budgeting for is eight thousand nine hundred and eighty-eight, so just slightly under that nine thousand students for next year. And then for early childhood special education, you can see we have one hundred and seventy-two children that we anticipate with, and that is, they only are here for part of the day, so so many hours, so that's equivalent to what we think will be sixty-eight students or average daily membership with the number of hours. Our revenue budget parameters, increasing the gen ed formula by two percent, we were right on that, hopefully, and so we'll see a total increase, including the two hundred and fifty-two students added into our enrollment of three thousand eight hundred, three thousand one hundred and eighty-eight thousand three sixty. Our increase in special ed revenue is about four hundred and fifty thousand dollars. That includes the four percent that we get every year in increase, plus we do get a little because we're a growing district, so that does help us as well. Aspen transportation revenue, that's four point six six percent of the basic formula of that six thousand four thirty-eight, so that's about three hundred dollars per pupil unit. We figured three hundred students, it's ninety thousand dollars. We are seeing a decrease in title funding for next year. They're anticipating fifteen percent decrease, and that's because when you average the state of Minnesota's number of students that are free and reduced lunch compared to the rest of the nation, our number has decreased. Not the number of students that have qualified, it's our percentage compared to every other state in the nation. So we have a, will receive less funding than we have in the past because of that reason. And it's only for title funds, so that's a decrease of about fifty-seven thousand. Unfortunately, those affect our, you know, we have intervention and all of those programs through our title funding, and so if we aren't to decrease the costs, usually we try and maintain programming, so if our costs, if our revenue goes down, we somehow try to cut that so it's the same. However, because this is part of our most vulnerable children, the decision was made at the administrative level that we would like to maintain the expenditures, so that difference in that revenue will come from the general fund to cover those expenses, since we're losing that funding in the title. Does everybody understand that? And then we do have a slight increase in this interest revenue for next year, about thirty thousand. So our projected total revenue for next year, based on those assumptions, is three thousand seven hundred and one thousand, three million seven hundred and one thousand dollars, million. We've talked about these staff needs quite a bit, and so you can see what they are. They haven't really changed a whole lot. And we did split out the specialized teaching, we had three point nine in there, and one of those, point eight, that was a coordinator, so I pulled that out as a separate. But you can see as we've been growing what those needs are. And then because of the additions of the spaces in our buildings, we anticipate about two hundred and twenty thousand dollars in either utility costs, custodial budget increases, and some transportation costs for activities. And then another hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars for two additional buses, and that includes the transportation for the Aspen students. And then we have allocated as part of our, as part of the referendum, about six hundred thousand dollars in capital. Another two hundred thousand dollars will be spent next summer out of the capital budget as well. So we have a total, all expenditures, of five million three twenty-two and twenty dollars. So you can see that's quite a bit more than the revenue that we have coming in. We do have a fund balance, and so we'll be spending that down a little bit. This is our, what you usually see as part of our budget. The top part is what we base this off of, all the general fund dollars. The restricted is at the bottom, the bottom section, that is because, we keep that separate because those funds can only be used what they are required to be used for by the legislature. So staff development and capital, basic skills, those kinds of things are all in the bottom. So what we can use the majority of our funds for is at the top portion. We're spending that down from twelve million eight twenty down to ten million one thirty-one. That leaves us with about a ten point four or five percent fund balance. And so our fund balance policies between eight and twelve percent, so we're within fund balance right there. And I'm gonna correct myself, that includes if we spend all of the one point five million dollars in capital, or in construction costs. So the board has allocated one point five million dollars to be spent on construction. The good news is that, as you'll see later on tonight, is that we, our bids for the Hamilton Ridge Elementary have come in less than expected, so I anticipate that we'll be coming back at some point and telling you exactly how much that the need is to cover those costs that we have over, and it won't be one point five million dollars, it'll be something less than that. Any questions about that?
Just for timeline, just as timeline of what we need to do for legislature.
So as soon as the legislature finishes here, and then hopefully they may have a small special session, but as a school district and a school board, you have to approve the budget by June thirtieth. And I'm hoping to bring this as a final budget at the June board meeting on the twelfth, or tenth or twelfth date. So that's the general fund. So we have over a hundred million dollars in our general fund expenditures and revenue. This is the first time we've hopped over that hundred million dollar mark. For all of our other funds, so we have a food service fund, you can see that we're spending that down, we're still working on that budget. We do know that we've saved that fund because of all the construction, that we'll be using some of that to spend on and buy new equipment in some of the areas that we haven't bought new, because we knew we were expanding or changing those kitchens. So now we're gonna spend that fund down a little bit, but you may see that tweaked just a little bit before the final. We're still working on that budget. Community education, they're really working on bringing their fund balance up a little bit, so you'll see a little bit of an addition in that area. Our building fund, the revenue that's in there is from interest revenue, and so we're spending that down over the next year quite a bit. I don't know if we'll make all of that down to four point four million, but we're gonna be close. And then our debt service, that's where we repay our bonds, we receive that money as taxes, and we pay our bonds out of that fund. Our internal service fund, you're gonna see a two percent increase in this, this is due to our premiums of our health insurance, because we're self-funded, and so our increase this year in our health insurance is two percent, and so you'll see an increase in premium costs and expenditures due to that, what we anticipate and what those estimates are. And then our OPEB, you just see an allocation for revenue of a little bit of interest revenue there. So those are the remaining funds. I think we're about a hundred and forty-five million dollars of total revenues and similar expenditures for all funds in the district. Yes?
When you were talking about the food service fund and the equipment, do we see that as a cash outlay, or do we see that as a depreciated outlay in these numbers?
It's a cash outlay.
It's a cash outlay, yeah, okay.
And again, we'll see how it all plays out. We kind of have it in the budget for this year, but because we'll cross over next summer, as things happen, it may end up, we don't spend it all this year, but I wanna allocate it, and if we don't, then it'll just become fund balanceable, spend it in the following year. Because we do have construction still happening all the way up through and into FY twenty twenty-one. This is fiscal year twenty, seems weird to be saying that.
Just on OPEB, because that's kinda changed since I've been on board.
Yes.
You wanna just talk a little bit about that, that there isn't as much of a need now to add to that.
So our OPEB is our other post-employment benefits. That's to pay off any benefits that we have after people are retiring, like health insurance and those kinds of things. We have met our direct cost needs, and so the requirement for direct costs has been met, and so the board made a decision last year that we'll just continue to increase just by the revenue expense. They have to include, when we do an actuarial study, they have to include direct and indirect costs, so we're covering, we have covered our direct costs, and now anything that we continue to have will be indirect costs.
So each year, as we get our audit, that will be reassessed, correct?
We do, we have to have an actuarial study every three years.
Three years, okay.
Yes. But we have done one just recently.
Okay, so they take a look at that?
Yes. And we'll see, our total liability is about a little over eleven million dollars. So we're not far from that, total. So if we continue to just add to it and not spend money out of there, we'll be okay.
Any other questions?
Okay, then I'll be coming forward at the June board meeting, hopefully barring any changes in the legislature, we'll be ready to go.
Okay, we'll move, thanks Julie, we'll move on to the bid recommendations. This is a review of the bids. You had them for a number of days, and we will be taking action on them at the meeting. Please write out which is the subject.
I do not have, I'm sorry.
Wanna go through number sixteen, Jim?
Eighteen. Or, yeah, that's bid pack sixteen.
Mechanical?
Yes.
Good evening, board chair, school board members, Dr. Stahl. So these are the results of the bid pack sixteen. This particular one is for mechanical equipment, and this is supply only. This is where the district purchases equipment, or in some cases, we also purchase some of the equipment, and we avoid markup and sales tax. So bids for product savagery schools, Hamilton Ridge Elementary, mechanical equipment, supply only, were received and publicly opened two o'clock on Tuesday, April twenty-third, at the district office. Nexus Solution recommends ISD seven one-nine that motion be approved for the Hamilton Ridge Elementary mechanical equipment, supply only to the apparent low bidders. Schwab, local supplier, for air terminal units, in the amount of fifty-five thousand seven hundred and ninety-five dollars. Boilers and accessories to the Ryan Companies, seventy-six thousand four hundred. Bid item number three, air-cooled scroll water chillers, again Schwab, Bowhammer and Lubret, ninety-five thousand and twenty-five dollars. Bid line four is modular energy recovery units and modular air handling units, again Schwab, in the amount of two hundred and forty-three thousand nine oh five. The recommendation is to approve these, again, supply only for the total amount of four hundred and seventy-four thousand one hundred and twenty-five dollars. Bid pack seventeen, unless there are questions on sixteen. This has been-
Any questions?
Stacy? Bid line four, any idea whether we've just got one in there?
Some of these items are specialty, especially in the supply side, so it's not, we're not bidding labor, we're just bidding equipment.
Oh.
And whatever matches the specs.
Mary?
Just a general question about them all. When we do the bid packs, are we still requiring them, that they lock in a prices for a year? Or is that-
I'd have to look at their contract, Mary, when we get that far, but I know they won't hold them for a year.
They won't hold these prices?
Forty-five days.
Forty-five days only? Okay.
Yep, that's what's in the bid.
Okay, I thought that they had to hold the, well, maybe I was thinking labor and, okay, nevermind.
There is warranty that goes with all the equipment.
Okay.
Okay. Bid pack seventeen is next on the agenda. Okay, and we had a lot of work scopes on this one. Bids for the Prior Lake High School, I'm sorry, Prior Lake Savagery Schools, Hamilton Ridge Elementary, footings and structural package were received and publicly opened at two o'clock on April thirtieth, two thousand and nineteen, district office. Nexus Solution recommends to ISD seven one-nine that motion be approved for Hamilton Ridge Elementary footing and structural package should be awarded to the parent low bidders. Work scope number one is masonry, and that, J and M Masonry, low bidder, in the amount of two million three hundred and twenty-eight thousand dollars. Structural steel direction, high five erectors, in the amount of eight hundred and fifty-four thousand dollars. Work scope number three, carpentry and general construction, Scriber Mulaney Construction, in the amount of one million six hundred and eighty-nine thousand eight hundred and ninety dollars. Roofing, Palmer West Construction, in the amount of one million one hundred and fifty-six five hundred. Cocking and fire stopping to the Coakers Company, in the amount of one hundred and thirty-two thousand four hundred. Work scope number six, doors, frames, hardware and supply to Johnson Hardware Company, three hundred and seventeen thousand nine hundred. Work scope number seven is aluminum mattress storefronts and windows and glazing to Ford Metro, in the amount of six hundred and twenty-two thousand. Work scope number ten, acoustical ceilings, Twin City Acoustics, in the amount of three hundred and thirty thousand eight hundred and ninety dollars. Resilient flooring and carpet, low bidder, Forest by Becker Incorporated, in the amount of five hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars. Wood floor, work scope twelve, gymnasium floor, Anderson Lab, in the amount of seventy-one thousand two hundred and sixty-three dollars. Work scope number thirteen, Terrazzo, that's W T G, in the amount of one hundred and ninety-eight thousand nine hundred and forty-five dollars. Painting, work scope fourteen, Franz and Decorating, in the amount of two hundred, two hundred and eleven thousand five hundred and ten dollars. Work scope fifteen, Aquable Wall Systems, to Huff Core, in the amount of seventy-seven thousand eight hundred and eighty dollars. Work scope sixteen, food service equipment, to Belter, in the amount of four hundred and sixty-two thousand three hundred and twenty-nine. Work scope seventeen, gymnasium equipment, to H and B Specialized Products, in the amount of thirty-six thousand two hundred and fifteen dollars. Work scope nineteen, fire protection, to Summit Companies, in the amount of three hundred and forty-five thousand dollars. Work scope twenty, plumbing and HVAC piping, to Ryan Mechanical, in the amount of two million two hundred and thirty-three thousand dollars. Work scope twenty-one, HVAC ventilation to McDowell Companies, in the amount of one million two hundred and sixty-nine thousand nine hundred. Work scope twenty-two, HVAC controls to the Yule Company, in the amount of two hundred and ninety-nine thousand four hundred. Work scope twenty-three, testing, adjusting and balancing, to systems management and balancing, in the amount of sixty-six thousand five hundred. Work scope twenty-four, electrical, to NAC mechanical electrical company, in the amount of one million five hundred and seventy-eight thousand dollars. And work scope twenty-eight, metal panels, to Menetownka Architectural Products, in the amount of one million three hundred and thirty-eight thousand eight hundred and sixty-seven dollars. The total award would be, let me read ahead, I'm sorry. So we also, Nexus also recommends that ISD seven nine, a motion be made to decline the bids for the Hamilton Ridge Elementary, work scope two, structural steel erection, Fram Red Cedar Steel and Erectors, and KMH Directors. The submitted bids from both contractors did not have complete scope of work included. Additionally, Nexus Solutions recommends to ISD seven one-nine that motion be made to decline the bids for Hamilton Ridge Elementary, work scope six, door, frames and hardware supply from Twin City Hardware and Kendall Doors Hardware. The submitted bids from both contractors did not have a complete scope of work included, so they were incomplete bids. In summary, Nexus recommends the board award bids totaling sixteen million one hundred and forty-seven thousand three hundred and eighty-nine dollars.
Any questions on those bids? Go on.
And finally, we have bid pack thirteen, high school additions and renovations package. If you remember, these are rebids for fire stopping and cocking. Bids for the Prior Lake Savagery Schools High School additions renovation package, cocking and fire stop were received and publicly open at two o'clock on Thursday, April twenty-fifth, at the district office. Nexus Solution recommends ISD seven one-nine that the motion be approved for the high school additions and renovations for cocking and fire stopping to be awarded to the apparent low bidders. Work scope seven eight four for fire stopping, Carso Fini Cocking Company, in the amount of one hundred and twenty-three thousand three hundred. And work scope zero seven nine zero to Carso Fini Cocking Company, in the amount of one hundred and ninety-two thousand three hundred and fifty-five dollars. That is the extent of the bids.
Jim, this was another one where we had something incomplete?
I think the numbers were high.
Well, we rebid it because it was over budget.
Yep.
We got it closer to budget, but then the Coakers still had a bid error on the second go around as well, and submitted a letter requesting withdrawal of bid for an error.
Any other questions? Okay, then we'll move on to elementary attendance boundary options.
Thank you, beginning board members, staff and community members. Like every school district who builds or closes schools, we're experiencing the complexities and the challenges of changing attendance boundaries. I wanna thank board members, administrators, staff, members of the design team, members of the input team, and our parents for their engagement in this process. The good news in all of this is that people love their schools. The good news in all of this is that we are a growing district, and we had the community support to add learning spaces to our buildings. The good news in all of this is that our schools are all excellent. Truth in all of this is that in order to open Hamilton Ridge and to ensure stable capacity in all of our schools, we need to change elementary attendance boundaries. As you all know, the layout of our district is unique. We have one school, one elementary school west of the lake, and we have several schools in close proximity of one another. As a growing district, we've paid attention to the current housing developments, and we also have to be mindful of the future potential developments, so those have been those areas of interest that we've noted in all of our plans. We need to fill Hamilton Ridge to provide that stable capacity to all sites, and we have to draw on multiple current boundaries in order to balance the capacities and to factor both the current and the future housing developments. And we've looked at that in a number of ways. The process that we use was certainly, has been full of community engagement. We had a design team that was made up of administrators, including all of our elementary principals, our transportation and operations team, preschool kids company staff, and their role was to really design the options, to look at the data deeply and to design the options that will provide both long-term stability and efficiencies to our district. The input team then was made up of those design team members, in addition to four people from every one of our elementary buildings, two staff members and two parents. We also invited our partners from the cities, from our non-public schools, and our transportation company. Their role was to provide feedback to the work presented by the design team, to ask questions, to ask if some other things could be tried, and then it would go back to the design team for that. As Chair Schimmick pointed out, there've been multiple opportunities for community input and public input throughout the process, and the process worked. Through that input, plans have been changed, which is exactly the way it was structured to do, to allow opportunity for feedback to the options and then to inform additional options. The board has provided several opportunities to your community members, including tonight. Extended the timeline to listen to stakeholder feedback, and many board members have met with administrators multiple times throughout this process, to learn more, to get additional information. As you know, the design team works through many variations to bring forward options to the design or to the input team. Again, the goal's been balancing the capacity and factoring current and future housing developments into these decisions so that we can have stable capacity for the next five to six years. B one, as you know, moves the area on the northeastern boundary of Jeffers Pond for more capacity at other schools. C one moves the area west of the lake across for more capacity at Westwood and the central schools. Originally, the design team had actually brought forward C three prior to C one, and at that meeting, the input team was looking at both C one and B one against the guiding change document, and that was the time, I'm sorry, C three and B one against the guiding change document, and that was at the point that the input team said that C one actually was a better option. I know people, board members have asked for a pro-con list, and, you know, I think that as we look at these options, the discussions and the decisions don't, can't be boiled down to a simple pro-con list on each of these options. If there was an option that had a lot of cons, the option wasn't brought forward. All of the options will work, and they all have different impact and different considerations. Originally, as you know, the input team had decided to only bring two options forward to the board, and those were B one and C one, and after feedback from board members and community members, there were two primary areas of concern. Carriage Hill's families not going to Jeffers Pond, and then the families west of the lake going to Westwood instead of either Jeffers Pond or Fivehocks. At that input meeting, when the recommendations were made to go with B one and C one, there was the energy around C four. There were a couple of groups that had talked about that and asked about that, and again, that decision had already been made, that only two would come forward to the board. But as, as I reviewed C four, hearing the concerns from both B one and C one, that's when I asked the input team to come back together to review that option and consider bringing three recommendations forward for board consideration instead of two. Again, that was the option at that point of looking at B one and C one that had the most energy from the input team. The other thing before the board that I'd like to address before the board begins discussion is I wanna discuss some of the concerns about the SAGE numbers. Originally, in the data report, we had only resident students that were not in programs but were in the schools, and that's why the SAGE numbers were not included with Westwood is because it was a program. However, when we added the preschool numbers, which are also programs, it would've been more consistent at that time to also add the SAGE numbers. As we reviewed this, I don't believe our options would have changed significantly. In order to get capacity at Westwood, we need to draw from either the northern part of the JP boundaries, west, which we did across the lake, or we have to draw from the south. By drawing from the south, that really is, we're Fivehocks, you know, right next to the Fivehock School, so we didn't do that. So if we kept all of the homes south or west of the lake in Jeffers Pond, as well as Carriage Hill and Nob Hill, the capacity of JP would be too high and Westwood would be too low. I know board's gonna have consideration, our discussion at this point. Again, I'm really grateful for everyone who's been engaged in this process. I know that whatever decisions are made are gonna impact people differently. I also know that our elementary administrators, our teachers and our staff will do a wonderful job. job welcoming and serving all students in each one of our excellent schools.
Okay, tonight, I think it's important that we get feedback from each of the board members on the recommendations, the three options that have been presented to the board so that we hope we can take action in due intent. I think it'll be important to hear from each one of you as what your pluses and challenges are with the options. And with that, I'll open it up to anyone that would like to. Jonathan? Are you a small group member? Would you like to talk?
Well, I love to talk, you know that. Just to clarify before my remarks, are you asking for our feedback on each of the options or kind of what direction we feel like we're leaning at this point? Are we just kind of want a little thought process?
It can be more general. It can be more general. It can be if you're feeling strongly about one option over another, you know, just so we can have some good discussion and be prepared for, to take action in due intent.
For me, I have tried to approach this with both a real pragmatic perspective and also a very personal one at the same time, which are, which is challenging. I think we were all elected to make good decisions and good decisions for the long-term good of the students of the district. We have a good process in place. I appreciate the effort put forth by the input team and all of the work and poring over all of the data. Ultimately, the objective to me is making the most efficient use of the spaces that we have so that we are being financially responsible and also providing the best opportunity for our students. That's, that's how you do that. There's been a lot of discussion about having displacement numbers. And I know that for anybody who feels like they're moving from one building to another and feels like a displacement, I think, I think keeping that number as low as possible is important. And I think the way that we keep it as low as possible is by doing this once, by making a good decision today that will actually work for five or six years and not having to come back and revisit this in two or three because of a short side, a short side of decision being made now. So I have, I've spoken with a couple of different input team members on multiple occasions and tried to get out myself to see what some of these communities are going to be like. Driven some of the routes between seven and eight in the morning. I think that's, that's, that's moving into sort of the personal part of it. This is about our kids. This is about your kids. I understand that. We all draw from our own experience. My two oldest kids spent time between the two of them in seven different buildings. One of them, four buildings, one of them, three, over the course of their elementary years. Pond's Edge, Oak Ridge, which is, not Twin Oaks, Westwood and Red Tail. And in my opinion, my kids are better off for it. They learn to adapt. It, it works. So what we, what we tell these kids this is going to be is what it's going to be to them and I would hope that we keep it as positive as we can. To that end, I had a conversation with a friend, Kelly Mopin, who is a mom in the district who was affected by our last redistricting two years ago. Her son, Asher, spent his fifth grade in Glendale. He moved his last year of elementary school. And I just, I talked to her two hours ago. She was going to be here, she's not feeling well. She had all the apprehension that everybody in this room has. It's my kids, it's a change, I don't like change. And I asked her how it went and she said Glendale was amazing. The principal and the staff rolled out the red carpet for the new kids that came from Red Tail. And she said, my kids told me last week that they, they're glad that they went there, that they went somewhere different. And she said, Asher is probably better prepared for middle school next year because he's had one change under his belt. So it's, it is personal and I understand it. I've read every email. I've responded to the ones that were specifically addressed to me. I've had a lot of conversations. Over the weekend, I drove down to the Pretty White Church on Lake Catherine to drive from there to Red Tail and to drive from there to Five Hocks. Because if we think about yet another option, we're now asking those folks to move. I knocked on some doors out there and just asked people with children how they would feel if something else changed again. And so I, and I think it's, it's talking, it's listening, it's hearing and making the right choice in the best interest of our kids over the long haul. That's where I'm coming from.
Might I just go around?
Sure.
Okay. Rather than speak to any one specific option, I just want to pull up some points if I can go through a few points. I went back through all of the emails. I just pulled out my notes from phone calls, my notes from open forum session. I reviewed social media and news stories. And I pulled out a bulk of the common themes I just want us to keep on the table from all of this input as we come closer to making a decision. And I'll just share those couple of thoughts with you, what those themes were. First one is I just, I want to remind all of us as a board that we be really careful how we refer to open enrolled families, either current or future. My concern is somewhere in the boundary process, it's turned a little bit into an us and them. There's our in-district kids and open enrolled families. And I just want to be really clear and if my understanding is wrong, correct me, but number one, open enrolled numbers are not playing into any of our plans. Number two, we're not building capacity in schools to attract open enrolled students. We're managing in district capacity. And number three, our current open enrolled families don't even have a voice in this process. But those are our kids, so I just want to be, remind us to be really sensitive how we're talking about issues of open enrollment and that all these students are our students and our families. And to read things even online or in emails that there's some sort of open enrollment conspiracy drives the wedge even further, I feel like we are one community, one school community. I also, on that sense, as we go forward and closer to vote, even if we're not using these words, I'd like to be cautious what we repeat because a lot of big words are going around. This is emotional, but to talk about being devastated or destroyed, my concern is some of these kids will have to adapt to going to new schools. And that is hard, but they're going to look to us as adults and us as community leaders for how we're responding to that and how we're setting the stage. And so even if we're just repeating what we hear, I just really want to be careful. Changing schools is really hard. Devastating is a different story. And also I want to remind us as a board member, we do have to vote on which boundary plan we'll go forward. So we are approving where lines are drawn. There's lines that are dividing neighborhoods. There's one close to me. Louisiana goes through and splits up a neighborhood. It's happening around the district, but I want to remind us, we have to do what's right for students and we have to trust the adults in the neighborhoods to handle whether or not their neighborhood is destroyed as a result of a boundary change. So I want to remind us that that's our goal is to do what's right for those students and for our district and to trust those adults that live in our community. I know we've gotten several group emails and I've gotten several private messages about the need to do our job as school board members. And as we're having this tough debate going back and forth, and I appreciate the different points of view, our number one commitment as a school board member is to do what's right for all students. We also have a fiscal responsibility and that means we have to be the best stewardess possible of the facilities in our district. Yes, there are schools in different neighborhoods, but schools are built for neighborhoods, they're built for the district. And I think we just have to be really careful about how we plan so five years out, we've managed those resources. All you have to do is read some of the community Facebook pages or letters to the editors saying the board's not being fiscally responsible. I feel that pressure and that weighs in this decision that we're doing. Also, we represent community members. You know, there's been a lot of push, speak up for your community members. And I just want to keep front and center that we represent all of the community members, not just the people we've heard at the microphone. So there, there are people who work downtown and driving back, it's going to adjust their drive time and commute time. We also have families in our district who are two or three jobs per parent. Daycare is always an issue and getting off work to even come to a meeting could be an issue. Or having the resources to organize a petition or go to the media might be an issue. So I just want to remember, we represent everybody and we represent the people who chose not to come forward and speak and said, I know the district has to change boundaries and let's move forward with it. I don't know about you, but I feel very caught between the messages of hurry up, you're stressing us out and slow down, there's no rush, let's get this right. And I'm really feeling that friction right now. So we do represent everyone, including people who might not have a voice at our table. I'm hearing a lot of the process didn't work. We weren't at those input sessions and we weren't at the design team sessions. We have heard from some people at our sessions that said it did not work, please come back to us. So this past week, I looked at our list of who was on those teams and I made some independent calls and asked people if they thought the process worked. And I apologize, I don't know why I'm always doing.
I'm calling you so I can listen.
Um, that's a sign to wrap up, but I do feel like after talking to some of those people that not everybody thinks the process didn't work, that, that there were, that people didn't necessarily feel coerced or, or that the process didn't work. So I do want people to know I independently, like Jonathan, I went out, knocked on some doors, set up some meetings and asked things. Finally, the last two things, we are here where we are because of capacity issues. And I will let you know that my kids switched boundaries from Westwood to Red Tail Ridge and we were new at Red Tail when it opened. My kids went through all those years at Red Tail. I still have a niece and nephew there. And in those years, I saw firsthand how they lost a music room, an art room, a media center, a teacher's lounge. They may do, which is great, but that is not sustainable. And that's the sort of forethought we have to have in mind as we're making these decisions for five years out. That is just not a manageable way to educate kids. I don't know how they pulled it off with such a great attitude, but I've witnessed that firsthand. And finally, as we're making these decisions, I, I kind of want to thank all of us for hearing stakeholders. I think if people weren't being heard, we would have voted on basics. We would have been done. Instead, we've received countless emails, I've received phone calls at home, Facebook messages, I've been scouring social media, there's news stories. Some of us drove neighborhoods, timed the routes. And I don't know how this final vote is going to go down or what process we're going to choose, but I will say, I feel like we've worked really hard as a board to hear everybody and remind us there's a difference between not being heard and not always getting the solution we want to get. So I don't know how you feel, but I'd like to thank you for making time to make all of this input possible. Can we keep?
And why was longer? No, you were just fine. You used just the right amount of words. So like Michael and like Jonathan, I drove routes, timed them, tried to figure out different times of day to get from point A to point B and what the differences would be from school A versus school B and then get myself north of the river because I'm one of those with, I work in Minneapolis, I work long hours. So that's something that's also important to me. So I'd like to represent that voice into this process as well, as well as those that don't utilize kids company, that utilize in-home daycare, that may not have a voice into this process because of time constraints or whatever the circumstances. My kids aren't affected and while there have been boundary changes in the past, my kids never were really impacted because they were in district, open enrolled somewhere else for one reason or another. Had we stayed at our neighborhood school and our neighborhood school changed, we would just roll with the punches because that's, that's just how we are. I grew up in a military family, went to three different kindergartens in three countries. First grade in two separate countries and then finally got some stability once I got to fourth grade, when we finally rented a home in the States. Then a brand new development opened up right next door, so we moved into that neighborhood. And that district decided not to allow public input into boundary changes. And the way they drew the line was right down the center of the road. And if you're on the even side, you got to stay at the neighborhood school and walk to school, less than one mile. And if you were on the odd side, you went to the elementary school two towns away, which for me was an hour ride on the bus. Not ideal, but we do what we do. It was hard leaving my friends, but at the end of the day, I had an hour to myself on the bus to do my homework while my friends were already home doing their homework. And by the time I got home and was able to drop my stop off at, you know, front door, say hi mom, bye mom, out the door I was and my neighborhood friends were right there with me because they got their homework done too. And we were still part of the same neighborhood, we're still part of the same BMX crew and all those fun things we did back in the eighties. So my friends stayed my friends and it helped me once we got into sixth grade and I was able to introduce my old school friends and my new school friends and bring them all together. We were all able to come together in sixth grade. So it was an easier transition and it helped shape me into the person that I am. I'm a connector, I'm a networker. I'm free and fairly charismatic and able to carry on discussions with anybody from anywhere at any point in time, no matter the circumstance. It's just one of those things that's helped to shape me and you can't survive all of those different changes without emerging a more positive, more successful individual. At least that's, that's my take on a variety of changes that I've undertaken. My kids didn't necessarily have those same types of changes and that was partially by design because I wasn't necessarily tethered growing up. My wife provides that stability because she's lived in two houses, her parents in ours. She's attended only the schools right here, never had to move. So we balance each other out that way and provide different opportunities, travel plus stability for all of our kids. I just wanted to share that with you. I'm still mulling over which, which direction to go in as I keep on, keep on driving, keep on reaching out, keep on connecting with different people and keep on looking at all of the demographic data and the boundary data to see what will be the least disruptive for all learners and look at this as an entire district, not just one area versus another area. That's all I got to say.
Thank you. Thanks, Lee. Our district director, Julie Sink, noted tonight at the top of our meeting that we are a growing district. We know that and the reasons are primarily twofold. First of all, it's the resident growth, but secondly, it is the continued open enrollment from other communities. Fortunately, unfortunately, as you look at our spread on our map of our district with Savage and Prior Lake, we have a cluster issue of where our schools are located. We only have one that's on the west side of the lake, which acts as a natural wall. I'm solutions oriented. I'm trying to come up with ideas. I too, like other board members, have driven the routes and seen the boundaries and seen where natural boundaries typically lie. And that's what our founding forefathers did. You have rivers and lakes that divide states and divide cities and so on. So together we all share, first of all, our commitment to neighborhood schools. That was one of the priorities in our decision matrix and what neighborhood schools mean. Secondly, we all share a commitment to have unacceptable capacity levels so that our students are, and our staff are able to function in their buildings. We know that the levels that we've had at Red Tail Ridge are unacceptable and we've made changes over the last few years that have been on the board to help alleviate that. And then of course, the third priority for us that we all agree on as board members is our shared commitment for our current students, our Lakers. Once a Laker, always a Laker. We all agree on that. And these are the priorities too that we're hearing from our community, loud and clear. And we're hearing it from all communities. We're hearing it from the, every neighborhood, including Carriage Hills, Northwoods, Martenson, Lord's, Spring Lake, Nob Hill, the list goes on and on. But ultimately, as board directors, it's our decision. Okay? We represent all those neighborhoods. We don't represent just one or two. And so we have the design team that gave us a win-win.
And so, we have the design team that gave us a win-win solution that is in front of us. And it was brought to us by our paid consultant, by our design team, and by our, our input team. And that option is C2. C2 satisfies the number-one commitment we have for neighborhood schools. And so, I would like to have, see a discussion about that, because when you look at that plan versus other plans, and you, again, I go back to the cluster of all of our schools in the middle, that's unfortunate. But you take from that then, kind of a spoke-wheel approach. And when I look at some of these plans, like C1, the way that C1 goes across our entire district just doesn't make sense. And it goes up and around and loops around through neighborhoods with, around the lake. Doesn't make any sense at all. There are some, like B1, that should, in my opinion, be thrown out, because they had numbers that, when that was chosen, we didn't know that we didn't have Westwood numbers appropriately in there in Sage. So, that one was skewed. You go on to the new option, C4, and at our last meeting, we really did not have a complete understanding about why C4 was called up from our superintendent and the basis for validating that option. I, I guess, I heard from other board members that there was confusion, and I heard from the community loud and clear in the last couple of weeks, you know, where did this plan come from? You know, we can, we can look at utilization numbers on another plan that makes more sense with keeping the lake as a natural boundary and, and see what can happen there. I mean, we've got a lot of numbers put in front of us, both input team, we've had numbers from, that we submitted to NDE, that are different than what our input team sees. That's been confusing from presentation to presentation. We, we have another hundred and fifty kids coming in every fall because of open enrollment. So, we need to have a real conversation and real answers about why do we continue to allow that happen when we are a growing district? Because we have the growth internally, why do we keep that door open? And why are we now affecting residents and having residents move as we allow room with dozens of kids that show up at the, at the Jeffers Pond northern border from Shakopee to get on the bus? So, we need an approach. We need, we need to be able to take a look at a win-win in that C2 plan, because it, it just normally looks like it works, because you're not pulling people from across the lake. And if you've got a shortage of capacity at Redtail, you move that, that western border over, that Mushtown Road is a natural border. Those two neighborhoods, all of those neighborhoods are still getting neighborhood schools. They're getting that. Whereas you've got six other neighborhoods that are not getting neighborhood schools. And if that was our number-one option, or our, our option, our number-one goal, we need to have that happen. And it's up to the board to put on their, their big boy pants, and the board makes this decision. We are grateful for the community input team, but it's just that, it's input. Those are my, my thoughts, and we're hearing that across the community. And we represent this community and the district together. So, we, we can pull off a win-win here and unite our community. And that's what I'd like to see happen. And I know that my fellow board members would like that as well.
Can you listen?
Mary?
Well, I've read many, many emails from people, I've listened to all of the inputs. I've had people calling me, stopping me at various venues, as I'm sure we all have. And you know, I have to put my own experience into this. When I first moved here nineteen years ago now, and lived in Savage, it was in one of those farmlands that was being split up. And because of the taxes and because of the way it was, it was split up into not only multiple school districts, it was also split up into multiple elementary schools, and it kept switching, because that was before Redtail Ridge, it was before the new high school. And we had multiple buses coming up and down our small street. And so, that was one of my first goals, is that shouldn't happen. And from what I've seen here, other than neighborhoods that are being put together and all the options, we're not actually splitting up streets, which is one of our goals. We're not having that happen. But you know, when I first moved here, I was a single mom for twelve years. And I do make the trip across the river. And that is painful. It is painful to try and get back on time, whether you had a kid at kids company or at a local daycare provider. I mean, minutes count. The good news is, is that is, that's a short-lived timeframe, because as kids grow, they all, you know, end up in the same middle school and then in the same high school. But in that short timeframe, I want to sympathize with the people that have said, hey, you know, we're, we're going to be hurting. It's minutes count, and you can never predict that, that traffic on thirty-five, one sixty-nine. And daycare providers and kids code, they don't like it when you show up a minute late, right? And everyone's breaking along, speeding, or blowing the stop sign somewhere along the line to try and get there during certain times of the year and uncertain circumstances. So I get it. No matter what you do, even if where you are right now is not convenient, you've got a pattern down, you have, you know, you, you have that scheduled down, and it's practiced, and change is, is not easy. But we are in a situation where no matter what, we have to change. There's some that were natural, that were never going to have to change, but there's others that were surprised by the change. And like Enrique, I have some questions on the numbers. As I mentioned last time, the percentages and how they switched right away. Don't, because I can't see the numbers, and as I've explained to other board members, I am very left-brained. And, and so, there's a couple, you know, questions that I still have about the percentages and how they were broken off between C1, B1 in particular, and then C2, and why that was moved around or considered not acceptable to be brought by the planning committee. Overall, I think the biggest question that we've had, and it's not, I don't believe it's because of people really being the squeaky wheel or anything like that. I think it's because of that schedule, of that drive. And, you know, we don't have an easy, an easy district to get around, we just don't. But when there is percentage differences that I'm seeing on here, and in addition to the drive... And I want to temper, I want to be very clear with everyone in here. My kids went to multiple schools, okay? Some transitions were easy, some transitions were hard. They're all going to have to transition at some point in time to middle school. They're all going to be stuck in new classes, they're all going to be divided up between their friends at some point. But I understand the, the trauma, I understand the convenience factor, I understand the, the change factor. What I'm just trying to do is understand it from a numbers perspective, because we do have some undeveloped land still. We do have crowded schools with the only natural boundary really being the lake, which isn't really natural, because we've only got one school that can stick it out on the west side. So the other ones have to make decisions. But I, I still have some questions about those percentages, and I have the questions about the predicted growth in those areas, to make sure. Because once we go through this, this is a painful process for everybody. I'm sure the, the planning teams and the, and the, and the teams that got together and all the, even the effort just to put the numbers together to bring forward to them was not an easy process. We don't want to have to do this again, okay? For a long time, I, I understood what Dennis said about, you know, average three to five years or something like that. But I think that given our boundaries and because the amount of change we're making, I'm hoping we can make it even longer than that. I'm assuming that would be the goal. And that's why I've got still quite a few questions about the percentages. And I don't know if we're going to have the time to meet with the team or anything like that in between then, but some of the swaps in the percentages, sometimes by up as much as ten to fifteen percent based upon the options presented, are still concerning to me. And, you know, I'm not, I personally am not convinced, let's say, that some of the properties that may be developed are not going to be mixed-use, because we are desperate for new businesses here and for more retail, et cetera. And I think that's going to change the demographics a bit, and I do think it's going to change the traffic patterns. And I don't know, I, still, we, we have what was presented to us, but we don't have a lot of insight on how those decisions were made or if those factors were, were considered. And so, that's where I am, and I'm, I'm not, I know I'm leaning one way based upon what I'm seeing, and based upon my own drive time, and based upon the distribution of where the schools currently sit and the demographic numbers, because I have pored over the original demographic report quite a bit, as well as the Scott County demographic, uh, demographic report. And I'm still kind of confused about where the percentages ended up.
Mm-hmm. Stacy?
I'm going to be honest, this is what, when I'm here on the board, and this is probably going to be my hardest vote. I was emotional, sorry. Because I know how much it would affect a family, it feels me. I do want you to know that I'm, sorry, compassionate when it comes to that. But, I do know that when a referendum passes, we have to build a building, we're building a building, and lines have to change. And I think it was eleven years ago, when I had kids in school, the same process went through. And my sister-in-law actually served on what we would call the design, the handover. And she said, I'm never doing that again. So, I do give a lot of credit to everyone that served on that. It's a hard process. And at that time, I, I wasn't on the school board, I had two little kids who were at Glendale, and a lot of their friends moved, and moved a couple times. And I, at that time, was actually the cashier at Oak Ridge, the school we're here now. And so, that, that was set up as kind of a temporary school. So people knew that they were going there, but that they were going to move again in two years. And that was a hard thing for people to swallow. And, and I know Barb was there, I mean, she was, she ran, came through my line every day. And I'm just going to answer, there's a number of people. It was actually the majority of Jeffers staff, right, Jeffers staff. So, and what they did with that school was amazing. I mean, it felt every bit real as everybody else's school. So, as a board member, when we started this process, I knew how hard it was for them to move twice within a year period of time. So for me, it was really important that we do this once. And I hope, I mean, I'll be long gone, but I hope this lasts like twelve years. I mean, I really do, I hope it, I hope we don't have to do this again, because it's, it's painful. And it's painful, and I think in every district that goes through this. So, I do want to speak to the parents and the design team and the input team, that I know you guys work really hard, and I know you're advocating for your kids, but we have to put lines somewhere. And so, I did reach out to a number of people on the input and design team, and, you know, just said, hey, you know, the process, would you, how'd you feel about the process? You know, these options coming forward, was it a consensus on the board? And though it wasn't unanimous, you know, in their thoughts overall, I would say people felt that their voices were heard and that the process worked. So, you know, going forward, knowing that that group was representative, and it was very similar to kind of what was done in the district eleven years ago. You know, representatives from over, transportation, you know, everybody was involved. So, it was a similar process. And knowing, you know, I do know that with what we had going on at Oak Ridge and how our staff and administrators are, you know, they're going to do a great job transitioning whoever's moving. And I just also want to keep out there that, you know, there's going to be over four hundred kids at Little Gillogh moving, you know, there's going to be over four hundred kids at Greenwood moving, and the entire staff is moving. And so, there's going to be lots, and there's going to be kids at Redtail, there's going to be kids, you know, with Jeffers, Westwood, I mean, there's going to be a lot of movement. And so, I want to make sure that we do this, this right. So, and I think, for the most part, I think the process that we put forth, I think, was good. I think what happened, and I was one of the board members that voiced concern right away when the two options came forward, I talked to Chair Schinnick and Dr. Stallow, and just said, can we do something here? I mean, and I think it's important that, you know, we've had more, in my opinion, in the last nine years, this is probably the more public feedback and sharing that we've had in the process. And when we had the referendum, that was kind of more general, this is more, I mean, it's immediate and it's impactful. And so, I really want to be, I want to thank everyone for that, because we've read every email. I know all my board members have done it a lot, you know. We're coming in, everybody's coming in, asking questions. And so, it's going to be a hard decision. But I do think that the process, for the most part, worked, and that we're being presented based on what this guiding change document and the information that we put forward, that we have these options. And so, you know, I'm banking on that we're going to have those three options and see where she goes.
I don't want to repeat a lot of what's been said here, I have a lot of the same feelings. It is emotional, it's, it's a very difficult decision to make. But I just want everyone to know that the board, all of us, represent all people in the community, not just the ones on the west side of the lake. So as we're making a decision, we need to be looking at those on the east side of the lake, the ones that are in the south, the ones down by St. Catherine. They're all people in our district, and we represent all of them, not just the west side. We haven't heard from a lot of people on the east side of the lake. That doesn't mean that they're not, that they're thrilled about their changes. Maybe they're dealing with them differently. They're going to have challenges too, we need to keep that in mind. It's just not them. Open enrollment allows us to fill spots. It brings in extra money, but it also helps us, children bring in extra money with them, I should say. But it allows us to fill spots, we are not building for open enrollment. The other thing is, I've been in this district for thirty-nine years. Prior Lake Savage has been changing, it's all about change. That's what happens here, change, all the time. This district started as a very small little area, so the schools were all built pretty darn close together. All the outlying school areas were farm fields. Few kids here and there that came in, but otherwise, it was a very tightly knit area. All the schools are closed. So, when we say neighborhood schools, we really don't have neighborhood schools. We started out with K2 in one building, three, four in another, five, six in another. We had seven, or five, six, yeah, five, six in another, six, seven, nine. And then we went to the high school, finally we got a new high school, things changed again. Jeffers Pond was built where it's built, because we could get land. Mr. Jeffers was kind enough to work with us so that we could build where we built it. It wasn't built for a specific neighborhood, none of the schools have been built for a neighborhood. I think everyone needs to understand that. I, as Stacy said, when B1 and C1 came forward, I looked at it and I thought, going through from one side of Prior Lake to the other is going to be a nightmare, especially with all the issues on, what, twenty-one and thirteen. But the problem is, we have one school on the west side of the lake. We have five hocks that you could consider to be on the west side, but it's not on the west side of the lake, it just happens to be a little south. That's an issue. I mean, we've got a problem with that. Perfect world, we take all the buildings and move them around all over the district, and everyone would be happy. It's not going to happen. Again, I want you to know, change is difficult, no one on the board is taking it lightly. But we are elected officials, we get to make the decision whether we want to or not. And we need to make the decision based on what's best for all the kids in the district. That means both sides of the lake, south of the lake, north of the lake. Not an easy one. With that said, the plan would be that we will be voting, taking action on June tenth. And I would like to adjourn this part of the meeting so that we have time for some public comment. And again, to remind you, I'm asking those that have not had the opportunity to speak, speak first, and then we'll be leaving shortly for the Savage City Council meeting. I have Sean, but yeah.
We have no opportunities, excuse me, we have no opportunity to have discussion amongst us?
If we want to choose not to have public comment, yes. I guess that's important, so, I, I tried to make that clear at the beginning. But if you want to have more discussion, then we'll give up. we'll give up the public comment.
Because if we have no discussion among us, we're only gonna have the three that you said.
The three options, the three options are what were presented to the board. E1, C1, and C4.
There were many options presented to the board.
Those are the only three options that came from the committee that were, that were presented to the board, from the committees. And that's what we're discussing tonight.
I would like to ask my fellow board members if they would reconsider an option that, that the board, that the input team did have and that we spent money on, Dennis Cheeseburn, and C2, because it geographically makes sense.
So, are you asking the board if they wanna look at the other options or just C2?
Yes. I want them to look at C2 specifically because it seems to be the most logical. And you have to look at that.
I guess that would will the board's...
Are you talking C2 or C2 amended?
C2 amended, so that we just tweak it so that we're looking at that western border of Redtail, because we wanna make sure our capacity is appropriate there, okay? And at the same time, we wanna make sure that we've got proper capacity and not overfilled at Five Hocks. And that was the only reason.
Does the board wanna continue this discussion because we will not be having open forum? And does the board want to address C2?
I've talked with board members now.
John, there's not a favor of that.
I don't support it.
Michael?
I'm, I'm comfortable with where we're at. I have enjoyed having the different discussions and even debate on this and it's really helped me to come full circle. And I think we can keep drawing lines until we're blue in the face and we're still gonna displace or make people upset.
Well, in the south, they would still hit neighborhood schools. Everybody would hit neighborhood schools.
I, I call, I know, but I, as I told you earlier, I, I feel very comfortable, I call people on input team, I call people on the design team and I've gone through everything. I'm comfortable with where I'm at right now. I, I will do whatever, I will go with the board voice though with what the board decides.
Do you wanna discuss C2?
I don't need to discuss C2. If other people do, I won't. And you can...
Actually, I have a question on C2.
Do you wanna discuss C2? We have a few more minutes.
Yes.
Okay. Melissa does. Mary?
I just wanna know why it wasn't considered and I wanna know why C1 has seventy-four percent and C2, the, the outrageous number at, at Five Hocks, because that, that, I still never got my answer on that one in the next...
Have you come in to talk to anyone, any administrators about it?
No, I have not come in, but I did send an email in to question it and ask one of the members of the committee.
Stacy?
I'm in, I, I'm for the three options.
I'm also for the three options. Stacy, myself, Jonathan, and Michael, we will not be discussing C2 this evening. I will entertain anybody that wants to come forward that's not spoke before. I don't believe Sean is the first one unless I don't think he's spoke before.
If you're sticking to six fifteen, I'm, I'm...
I have a five-minute, I have a five-minute leeway.
Go ahead. Up here or here?
Sure, right up here.
Okay, thank you. I'll try to be quick to make room for others. Good evening, everyone. My name is Sean Bodett. I live in Prior Lake. I have three kids in the school district. I served on the input team. I teach fifth grade at Five Hocks and I proudly serve as the president of the Prior Lake Savage Education Association. We are fortunate to live in a community that values our public school system. Our district has been growing rapidly for many years. One of the effects of that growth is the need for more space. We've been very fortunate that the community has supported adding on to existing schools and opening new schools over the past several years. Part of that process of opening new elementary schools is the need for boundary changes. It is unavoidable and it is part of living in a community that is growing at such a rapid pace. Growth, new spaces, boundary changes, all present challenges for our school district, but all things considered, these are good challenges for us to be facing. The boundary change process is not being done to our students and families, but rather for our students and families. We value lower class sizes, dedicated spaces for art, media, physical education, and music. We value having access to collaborative learning spaces and all of these things are made possible by the opening of a new school and the changing of boundaries. In the midst of all the discussions around the current boundary proposals, I believe that we have lost sight of the fact that Greenwood's entire boundary has been shifted into a few different schools. The Greenwood families and staff have put their trust in the process and are moving forward with mixed emotions, knowing that this is what's best for all students in our district. To all the current and future parents of elementary students in our district, the school experience that your children will have is not going to be defined by the building they walk into each day. The experience will be defined by the people that they will interact with on a daily basis. Our staff members will challenge them, support them, and show them outrageous love each and every day. They will build friendships, learn from their peers, and hopefully have some fun along the way. The theme for our work in this district has been and will continue to be, we are PLSAS. We have amazing people that take a great deal of pride in providing a first-class education to all students that walk through our doors. To the board members, you set forth a process and tasked the design team and input team to review several options for boundary changes. Both committees have done that work. The pros and cons of several plans were discussed, a great deal of input was given, and in the end, there isn't going to be a plan that every family is going to look at and agree with, but there is a plan that will best meet the needs of our elementary students now and into, into the future. I ask that you trust the process you set forth when making your decision on June tenth. Thank you very much.
I'm not familiar with Erin Moll, I'm not sure if we spoke the part.
I spoke in the last one.
Okay, Marie Nadler? And then Nick Nadler?
So, my name's Marie Nadler, I live in the North Hill Development. I don't speak well in front of people, but I'm gonna, I have this whole story about why I voted for you and now it's your turn to vote and why it's so important, but I don't, we don't have time for that and you guys are past that. So, the thing, the thing that's the most important is the time that you're gonna be taking away from my family. Time's so important to us. And by driving seventeen minutes each way, you're taking an hour out of my day, an hour when my child can be at home doing homework, she can be having a family dinner. There's so much time you're taking by making us drive. If you look at the map of Prior Lake and you look around, it makes no sense for us to drive all the way around. I have so many people that come and that I talk to at work every day that look at this map and they say, it makes no sense for our neighborhood to go there. And I don't understand why no one else sees that. I, there's so many other neighborhoods that you guys could pluck from, like here and there, and it's not about the children, it's about the time as a family. I mean, at home, yes, our kids will be okay. I have a very non-adaptable child, but I know that she'll be strong and she'll do it. She will get through it. But if you're taking that time away from my family to sit in the car when I don't have to, all the schools are great, I don't care what school I'm at. What's, Glendale is closer to me than Westwood is. If you wanna move, move me to Glendale. Just shift people away from that.
Nick?
I just kinda feel like the energy just got totally sucked out of the room about ten minutes ago and, but, you know, it is what it is and I'm up here because I have a daughter that goes to, to Jeffers Pond and I have a son that will go somewhere, he's two years old. And I just wanna comment really quick on something that was said before. Someone had made the comment about, we need to be careful about the way we use the word devastation or devastating and things like that. But what you should be aware of is that there are people in this room, there are people around our city that live with trauma, trauma that you don't know about. There are people that have children that live with trauma, trauma that you don't know about. So, when you, when you make a change like this, that's devastating. That, that can be devastating to a family or to a child. So, it is okay to use the word devastating if that's how, if that's how it's affecting you because that's life. I'm not gonna be able to get through this whole thing on time, so I'm just gonna kinda break it down. I guess I wanna talk about accountability. You know, I'm concerned about the lack of accountability. Where was the account, the accountability for the lack of sound numbers when this whole thing was happening, when it was being presented? Would the plans that were, that are in front of us, would they be the same had those numbers been correct? We don't know that. I know there was some comments earlier that you believe there may be. But who's accountable for that? You know, it just seems like we, we say, oops, sorry about that, we'll change it and we're just gonna move on. I don't, I don't feel like there's any accountability on behalf of many of the people here. At least, I don't see it. I know a lot of us don't see it. So, it's frustrating for us. There was a Savage School Board meeting, or Savage City Council meeting, what, last week? And we, I don't know if it was you, but somebody just made a comment that, you know, these aren't neighborhood schools, they're, they're not meant to be neighborhood schools, but last week, you presented to the Savage City Council that this is a great idea because this is a neighborhood school. You said it. So, so which one is it? Is it a neighborhood school for them and not a neighborhood school for us? And I'm not trying to be petty. I'm just looking for transparency, I'm looking for accountability because there doesn't appear to be any. And it's insulting to us when we're hearing one thing on this side and then in thirty-nine minutes, we're gonna be hearing something different. So, keep that in mind. We're here now to hold you accountable. We will hold you accountable. I promise you that.
I believe our work session needs to adjourn and we'll go into our, our board meeting. I'm not gonna take a break.